All the night that we as a people will get to the promised land. So I'm happy tonight. I'm not worried about anything. I'm not fearing any man. My eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord.
Kingdom greetings and God's richest blessings be multiplied to you and to your beloved family. You're tuned into another segment with a feeling our land's live, interactive worldwide broadcast here exclusively on the Boston praise radio and TV network. I'm your host Pastor Hobbs. Be with you through till six P M. We had the privilege of broadcasting Tuesday through Friday, four P M. To six P M. Eastern Standard Time, Sunday evening, seven P M. To nine P M. And I have live in the studio today. District four city council Brian Warro. How are you, sir?
I'm doing blessed and highly favor. How are you doing, sir?
By the grace of God, I am phenomenal. Congratulations first and foremost.
Oh, man, thank you. Thank you. Very humbled, grateful to have the opportunity to serve my hometown of Dorchester, Massachusetts. And the great city of Boston and just, just, you know, taking it all in now to see what kind of change we, you know, when I say we, I'm talking to all the listeners and all our residents and all our neighbors and family and friends. We can make together here in the great city of Boston.
Absolutely. So it's been, uh, we had the privilege of interviewing you here on Boston praise radio and TV network and hear your platform. Um, and now that you have actually, you've had several endorsements out, only back up and so, so how was the actual campaign? How was the actual process? I mean, this is first time for you.
Right. Um. It was a good feeling, you know, connecting with people, listening to people's issues. And then on top of that, uh, we, we took a different approach. Because we wanted not just to ask people to vote for us, but we wanted to help people while we was out there campaigning. We wanted to show people what we, what it will look like if we were to win the seat, right? Um, and we got to, we were able to do that. Uh, we were able to deliver food, open, uh, deliver food to people who were in need, um, open up COVID vaccination sites. And that's, this was back in March. I think, um, us in the Cape Verde Association of Boston was one of the first people to do a pop up site. Also deliver food, uh, well, give out turkeys during, um, Thanksgiving and even during the holiday, the, the Christmas, Christmas, Christmas holiday season was able to give out toys to, to, to families, um, that, that was just, just in need, you know? So for me, it was truly, um, it was, it was a feel good experience to be able to connect with people. Um, and also to, 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 to help people, um, during, during that time in the campaign. Uh, but it was a lot of hard work, um, a lot of hard work, a lot of, I, I, I always joke around with people and say, I never knew that Dorchester Mattapan has so many stairs, you know, so many three families, so many hills. It's, 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 it's a lot of stairs. Um, and we were, I, I, I was, um, I lost a lot of weight. So if you ever want to lose any weight, you know, sign up to be on someone's, uh, campaign, you know, it's a lot of walking. Um, but it's, it's, it's definitely a feel good, feel good experience.
Justin, yeah, the, um, you were able to enjoy the, um, benefit of the endorsement of your predecessor, um, Andrea Campbell, which is pretty powerful.
Yes, uh, very grateful for, uh, counselor Campbell's, uh, endorsement and hopefully soon to be our next A G. So, you know, any, anyone, um, who lives, um, in the state, well, yeah, in the state of Massachusetts, Andrea Campbell for A G.
We guess you're endorsing her.
Yes, I have endorsed Andrea Campbell and it's, you know, someone, um, of that magnitude and someone who's so impressive, who have done a lot of great work here in the city of Boston. It was just so grateful and humbling to, to receive her endorsement and to continue on, um, some of her work here, here in the city of Boston.
Yeah, it's interesting. Um, I, I tell you, um, you know, district four seat, uh, that was held prior to Andrea Campbell was, um, our counselor Charles Yancy.
Yes.
A living legend here in this community.
Absolutely.
Um, and I have to tell you, as a person whom with healing our land, the work that we've been doing, particularly with regard to the state of emergency, the line item addressing A T R B N Aids and the black community or communities of color, particularly through years of the quarterly community forum process, it really was Charles Yancy who was our champion. So it was always good to be able to have, even though he was not my district counselor, you know, it's interesting, but he, he was a champion to be able to help us to advocate for something that really, um, a lot of folks didn't really want to stick their neck out. And I have to tell you, we know that the city council's real ultimate power. Now we've, they've done some changes, um, during the campaign and, and even post your, the, the, the cycle of elected tour there now in terms of how the power is shared in terms of the budget and in terms of, um, just the, the way that the system was set up before, it seemed like there was really, um, really the mayor had the primary power. The city council's power was in passing the mayor's budget almost exclusively, really. I mean, you know, kinds of hearings and those kinds of things, but I'm talking about ultimately the way that it stood. As the system was structured that ultimately the mayor submitted his budget to the city council and the city council says yea and nay. And that was, and city councilor Charles Yancy, that was one of the things he prided himself in his oversight as it relates to the resources.
Right.
And, you know, when you talk about line items, they can go up, they can go down, they can be level funded, but they have to exist.
Right.
Before you can even have the conversation.
Absolutely.
If they're going to be level funded, increase or decrease. And so he, I have to tell you through years of the quarterly community forum process to get a state of emergency declared, which happened in two thousand and five unanimously. All thirteen city councillors passed the resolution to declare a state of emergency with regard to addressing the black H I B AIDS epidemic. And, um, and to put the plan of action that came from the community, as you said, we conveyed it through, we were intentional on doing outreach to the underserved, to the marginalized, our returning citizens. A huge population that informed, that was disproportionately, um, infected and infecting partners. And so, um, understanding it from addressing the issues and underlying the behavior that put our communities disproportionately at risk for everything that have to do with poverty, that have to do with the economy. Um, it have to do with systems that are, we know are desperate and most of the electeds have gone, have advocated or campaigned through the lens of equity. And saying, we're going to be able to right the wrongs that have been, um, historically, you know, impacting the underserved and marginalized and disenfranchised. And so I appreciate now that the city council, interesting enough, is the most diverse that it has ever been. It's a beautiful thing to see where before it was a person of color or a Latino, you know, or a Asian. Now the city council is so diverse where there is the, the minority quite candidly are European brothers and or sisters.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. And it's such a historic moment in the city of Boston. Um, we, we had our first, uh, black mayor and woman mayor, um, and, and Mayor Kim Janey. And now we have our, uh, 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 a woman of color who is serving as mayor now. Um, and on top of that, as you said, the most historic, well, the most diverse, you know, Boston city councillor, uh, Boston city councillor in the history of this, of this great city. So, um, I think with that being said, you know, equity is at always front and centered at every city council meeting, hearing orders, uh, ordinances, and you see it through the legislation. That's, it should be reflected when we advocate for, 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 um, budget line items increases. So I think we're gonna, we're, we're in this moment of history. Um, or in a moment of this great city's history that we're going to be seeing more resources and targeted resources for our black and brown communities.
It's beautiful. And, and so, and back to, uh, the living legend and the person of Charles Yancy, whom I think that he championed that. And so when it came time for the budget to pass, he said that we're not going to pass this budget to the mayor at that time, who I believe was Manino. Um, unless you create the line item, because, you know, we can do commissions and we can do declare states of emergency, we can have plan of actions, but they mean nothing if there's no teeth, which is money to actually implement these plans.
Absolutely. And that's, that's what it's about, right? It's about getting the resources to those commissions, to those departments, to do the work that needs to be done in these communities. And, you know, Charles Yancy, uh, councillor, councillor Yancy has done a great, great amount of work and I'm, I'm happy to be able to say, you know, I'm one of those, you know? I'm one, I'm one, I'm count in that line of succession. That, that is, that is a beautiful thing to say. Uh, I'm happy to be part of that lineage of district four city councillors.
It, it's an incredible legacy, you know, and I have to tell you quite candidly, you know, change sometimes is difficult and I, in full disclosure, I, um, because Charles Yancy was such a strong, uh, champion. Even when the whole city council, I mean, I'm remembering another situation, another champion was, God rest his soul, was, uh, help me Chuck Turner.
Yes.
Another person whom was not my city councillor, but one who champion marched with us when no one else would. So those are two elected that were two black men.
Right.
Who led, really led, um, and so I really want to acknowledge that, that leadership. And so when it came time for his reelection and at that point Andrea Campbell was running to unseat him.
Right.
It was a little challenging for me and for many of us who had that deep relationship.
Thirty-four years, thirty-two years.
Yes, it was very, very challenging. But I have to say that people who I know who live in district four, from my, a very dear friend of mine, would tell me that one of the things that they appreciated about Andrea Campbell as their city councillor was that she always, well, they had access to her.
Right.
And that she would constantly respond, um, and many times when people campaign, they're accessible, but then once they get in office, they're not as accessible.
Absolutely. And on the campaign trail, I gave up my phone number. I think I came here and gave up my phone number. I'm still having that same phone. So if you ever want to call that phone, you know, I mean, as you know, it's the same number, you know, and I, I, I want to be accessible because I believe that, um, having that access to, you know, um, your city councillor, people who can advocate on your behalf.
Yep.
Um, it's good for, you know, our residents, but even good for me because I want to listen. I want to hear what the issues are. And that's when I've heard, that's when I came up with my best solutions was through listening to what the issues are. And sometimes some of those solutions were coming from our residents and our neighbors, you know, so they have all the answers already. I'm just trying to hear, to be supportive and help them, you know, create or bring to reality or bring to fruition what they already telling me about. So some of these ideas are just what people I've been hearing at the doors.
Sure.
What I've, what I've heard at, you know, civic association meetings. And, um, so that's why I always want to make sure that I'm accessible, uh, because it's, it's, it's where you come up with the best ideas.
Absolutely. I'm gonna, um, put the camera on you and I'm gonna actually let you just speak to the community and, and articulate whatever it is that you want to share as it relates to one, you're just, uh, an appreciation and or sharing some of your platform. Now that you've been in office in this period of time, what some of your platform and how just updating us with kind of where you are right now.
Absolutely. Um, so first and foremost, it's leading on collaboration and civic engagement, um, and centering people, our community, our residents, our neighbors, our families, our friends in the work. Uh, we released on, uh, my maiden speech, we released the black and brown economic empowerment agenda where we are going to be focused on equity and contracting. Our first hearing on equity and city contracting will be held this week on Friday at eleven A M. So if you're around or available, please tune in. And if you want to testify, please send me an email and I could get you over to the contact or the information could be found on, um, W W W dot boston dot gov. Um, we're also going to be looking at education, workforce development, housing. Um, and, and we, we, we held a, a hearing on Monday on a cradle to career pipeline. And what we're trying to, to establish here in the city of Boston is a system that collects data on what models, programs are working for our students to make sure that they have that pipeline in order to, it, it, well, a pipeline in order to get to family sustaining careers, right? We want to make sure that our students are being prepared for jobs of today and jobs of the future. But the only way we could do that is to make sure that it's a measure what actually works. And right now what we're, what, what we're seeing is there's so many different organizations and, and, and nonprofits and so many different initiatives that we are not measuring what the impact is for those students. So we want to make sure that we are putting real numbers and evaluating and valid, validating, um, those initiatives by creating this cradle to career pipeline here in the city of Boston. Um, and we had, like I said, we had our first hearing on, on that. And we're looking to have continued conversations on establishing that, that, that here in the city.
So, um, I understand this black and brown men and boys commission, um, that is in the process of, um, coming, I guess it, it's established, I guess, bring back up. So if you can educate us, because, um, I understand that, uh, that the commission is something that either is established, there's moving parts to it. Just give us an update in terms of, I guess, where it is, um, and what the process was to get to where we are.
Okay.
And how, how, some of the vision of how people can be a part of it moving forward.
Got it. So, um, let me just start off by saying that I've been part of the council for, um, since January the third. So I might not have the whole history on, on, um, how everything was moving around and, you know, the, the whole history behind it. But just want to just give a, a, a big shout out to councillor Mejia, uh, Mayor Janey, uh, Tito Jackson, uh, Frank Farrell, the executive director, uh, for all their hard work on making sure that this commission is finally established in, in the city of Boston. Um, so we had opened for, I believe, I want to say a couple of weeks, maybe a month or so, um, application process on the city website where you can put your name in to be part of this commission. Um, during that process, we received close to three hundred applicants, which is amazing. So, um, and it also speaks to the amount of people who are doing the work in advancing black, black men and black boys in the, in the city of Boston. It all speaks to the, the amount of people who want to get more involved on, on advancing that work. Um, so we had a list of a close to three hundred, uh, applicants. And what happened was the city council gets to nominate fourteen of those three hundred, uh, applicants. Uh, so we nominate fourteen to the mayor and she, and then the mayor would decide out of those fourteen, seven of, out of, out of the city council nominations. So what you probably seen in the newspaper was the fourteen nominations that the city council has given to the mayor for her to decide to choose, uh, a, a, a seven out of, uh, uh, out of that fourteen. But the commission is then made up out of twenty-one, twenty-one members will sit on that commission. So the mayor now has fourteen more selections to make to sit on that, on that commission. Um, so that's, that's where we're at. We're waiting for the mayor to decide on, on, um, on who's going to be appointed to that commission of black men and boys.
So, um, let me go back for the tool from a little history, um, and make sure that I'm clear. So my understanding is under the leadership of then city councillor, uh, Tito Jackson.
Right.
Whom initially had this idea of creating a black and brown men and boys commission to address issues that affect us.
Absolutely.
And that was unanimously passed by all thirteen city councillors.
Unanimously.
Again, this is something that doesn't often happen. So that consensus, but in spite of that.
And that, and that was without the most diverse Boston city council.
Yes, right, yes, right.
Yeah.
So, so even with that, you know, not diversity council, they were in solidarity. This is something that needs to happen.
Absolutely.
However, single-handedly former mayor, uh, Walsh, now, uh, secretary of labor, he single-handedly, again, back to the power of the mayor.
Right.
Could be vetoed it.
Right.
And said, no, my understanding was the reason why was because my brother's keeper.
Right.
This national program that I guess was under the Obama administration.
Yes.
That was, he felt was already in place. And this was something that was just replicating services that was not, because we're talking about a grassroots commission that's from here. As opposed to a national kind of a campaign that sometimes is a lot of propaganda, but it doesn't really have the ownership from the grassroots from the community that it was created.
Yeah. And I believe in the grassroots, you know, and I think that our solutions should come from our, from our residents, you know, the people are here on the ground, the people that lived in this community. Cause they had the best understanding of what's going on and they lived it. You know, I think that's the way that we need to lead is through lived experiences. Um, and when you can speak to that, i- i- it creates a different type of movement.
Yeah.
Creates a different type of buying, different type of solution. So, um, I'm, I'm excited, you know, for, for, for Frank, um, um, and, and this commission. Um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to the great work that we're all going to be doing here to advancing black men and boys.
Absolutely. Back to just the point of, of history for updating folks. So, so, so it was revisited under the first black, first female.
Yes.
Mayor, uh, though, um, appointed because as, as a result of Mayor Marty Walsh taking off. His appointment, um, to D C.
Yep.
That by default, then, um, the acting mayor, Janey, she assumed that position when a whole lot of stuff going on.
Right.
But she made sure that she, I stood right there at city hall with her as well as Ron Bell and Julio Mejia, who actually did, again, city council at large who won by one vote.
Right.
You know, this just speaks to the power of democracy.
Absolutely.
Continuing to be engaged when something doesn't happen to continue to push that it can happen maybe in another administration. So we've gone through the Manino administration. We've gone through the, the Walsh administration, the Janey administration, and now the Wu administration that's in place for this actually now to come to this fruition. It's huge.
Yeah, no, and I always say, you know, love and consistence, love and consistency conquers all, you know? And it's because of the love that those advocates, you know, kept on pushing and fighting and the consistency and determination that they understood what was needed here in the city of Boston is why we're seeing that commission here today. So, um, no, it's, it's great, great work. And I'm just happy to, to be, you know, here seeing it actually happen and being part of these conversations right now in the city of Boston. And I'm looking forward to what, what we can accomplish, accomplish through that, uh, through that commission.
You know, one of the things that we talk about, you know, black and brown men and boys, and we talk about, you know, equity, right? One of the things we have to talk about is, um, is financial literacy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's a huge piece. When you understand this whole report that came out, um, some time ago, that said that, uh, African Americans, um, make, I think it was eight dollars an hour compared to like two hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, yep, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That's why, you know, for me, it's the black and brown economic empowerment agenda. It's making sure that we get the economic development and upward mobility for our black and brown communities. Cause we haven't seen it the way that we should be seeing it here in the city of Boston. We have too many resources and it's visible, right? It's, it's visible. Like if you leave Dorchester and start driving down Washington street, you're going to start seeing when the money start getting spent and when the resources are, are being delivered too, right? Um, and that speaks to the, the jobs that we have, the services that we get, our schools. Uh, so that's why we're leaning in on making sure that we create here in the city of Boston and give us the tools and the targeted assistance that's needed, you know, to get housing, right? To, to find out how we can bring assistance for people to stay here in the city of Boston. But what can we do in the school system to make sure that we are, when we're graduating our students, that they are prepared to get sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety thousand, a hundred thousand dollar jobs, right? In order to afford to live here in the city of Boston. Uh, but also even if they don't go off to college, like what, what can we do to prepare them to have a career in the trades? And, and, and not all trades in my mind are, you know, you know, construction sites or electricians or H, HVACs. Like we're, we're talking about C N A's, you know, uh, web developers. I think we also start thinking about those as trades as well, right? Um, uh, but just making sure that we're preparing our black and brown communities for economic upward mobility is, is, is why I'm focused on, um, the black and brown economic empowerment agenda.
And so I'm, I'm so, so with, with, you talk about the black and brown economic agenda. Um, so one of the things back, you talk about education, cause all these things are inter intertwined.
Absolutely.
So this is the educational Mecca of the world.
Yeah, it, it, and, and the thing is like even, even with this being the educational Mecca of the world, these might be a little dated stats, but one in four black and, um, black students in the Boston public school between the third and eighth grade, one in four.
Yep.
Can.
Yes.
Read at their grade level. One in four. So us living in the education Mecca of the world, um, it, it doesn't always translate to our black and brown communities. And we need to do a better job of connecting and collaborating. And that's why through that cradle and career, uh, tracking system, we're hoping to make sure that we're encouraging more collaboration by bringing more people to the table and then pointing to the research and the data to say, this is where we need resources. And these are the programs and initiatives that are working for our black and brown communities. Let's continue to invest in those.
One, I, 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 I think the, the piece about research, quantitative, qualitative documented outcomes and impact.
Absolutely. Have to measure it, right?
Those are things that we've not necessarily had in place.
Right.
That need to be in place.
Right.
So this is not a moment, but a movement.
Um, right. And that's, and, and for me, it's about the, like, to your point is creating that infrastructure, making sure that we are creating that infrastructure to produce the results that we want to see in our community. So that's what I'm focused on is making sure that that infrastructure is in place. So regardless of who's there, right? Because is, you know, one day I'm gonna be gone, you know, one day we all gonna be gone. But we want to make sure that generations of children have that infrastructure in place and that they're not, we're not kicking the can down the road, knowing what the problem is and not fixing the problem. But we want to make sure that we are pointing to the data and the outcomes of those initiatives to make sure that they are actually working, you know, for our black and brown students.
And then to that end, um, you know, I know that again to Charles Yancy, whom one of his things is again, back to the budget. And the oversight committee that one point was somehow taken out. Now I believe that it's back in place.
Yep. Well, I, I don't think it was, I, I can't, I don't know the history of it being taken up, but I know it's been there. Um, um, and councillor Mejia, um, is chairing that committee. And yes, definitely you want to take a look at that budget, uh, with a, with a fine tooth comb, right? Uh, cause that's where the resources are going. So that's, that's where the policy initiatives are going. So that's how we advocate for, for our city, for our residents, for our constituents, for our family members, um, is through that budget. So making sure when you look at that budget, wherever that most money's being spent and how it's being spent are questions that we ask as, as councillors to the administration to make sure that the outcomes are the outcomes that we are looking for, right?
Mm-hmm. So with that said, um, so one of the things she championed was the oversight. And I do believe that it, that, that it, that for whatever reason that it was not in place. But now it is back in place and I'm happy to hear that she's overseeing it.
Yep.
But also I wanted to point to that Charles Yancy also advocated for, uh, a school, uh, like we've got.
Oh, Mattapan, yep, yep.
That's one of the things she's been championing.
Right.
Is, you know, we talked about the educational, the disparities. This is the educational Mecca.
Right.
But the Boston public school system, you know, is, is, is not up to par.
Right.
You have these secondary, you know, institutions that are not even paying taxes because they pay, you know, the payment in lieu of taxes. And then many of them are, you know, buying up all the real estate and they're sprawling out, but not really giving back like they need to be giving back.
Right.
Particularly to adopt and maybe even create public schools that everybody has the same opportunities. If you're not fortunate to go to a Mecca, you're not fortunate enough to be able to be in a charter school. And if you have some behavioral conscientiousness or situations around home that don't support you actually learning optimally. And you even go through one of those entities and now you're pushed back out, you know, so the Boston public school system has got to be able to be brought up to par. One of the things is creating additional, uh, opportunities for people to have that quality of education in the Boston public school system.
Absolutely. And I couldn't agree with you more. Um, I think that, um, one of, one of my things, I think early childhood, early, um, early career in college opportunities should be in every school, right? Uh, our students should be able to start gaining credits towards an associate's degree and that V O T E C, right? I don't think that, you know, Madison is a, is a, is a, is an integral part, uh, in a big part of our V O T E C system. But I think that every, every student in the city of Boston should have that opportunity. But then also we need to make sure that we're focusing on pre K because a lot of, a lot of the development of a child's mind, of a student's mind happens in those very, very young, young, young stages. Uh, and even making sure that we are producing or creating a quality environment or a safe environment for that mother who is pregnant. Because, you know, even more research and Harvard research has showed that, you know, you, you really start developing the child's mind while.
In the womb.
Right. So this is stuff that we, 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 we have to look at as a city to make sure that we are helping our students and our, the minds of our, our young people develop in the right way. And we're creating the, as much assistance and support and, 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 and wraparound services to, 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 to make sure that when they go through our Boston public school system, that we put them off in, 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 in a place where they could go to a four-year college. They could get a, 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 a job at, 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 to be electrician when they're making a hundred thousand dollars. They could be the next C E O. They could be an astronaut and, 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 and a lot of that also needs, there needs to be programs around the school, right? Around the school that gives our students exposure. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, and, and what we're, what, what we're trying to do now is create the data to, 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 to have it all in one place, to start analyzing that data to see what programs are working, what programs need to be put in place. That way we're, we're, we're setting up the Boston public school system to start producing, um, um, students that are going to be successful, you know? Um, and, and, and I know we see so many reports in the Boston Globe and I, I believe there was a valedictorian, uh, uh, a report that said, um, um, I can't remember the percentage, but X amount of percentage are making less than fifty thousand dollars. And that's our valedictorians. Yeah, yeah, and it was a high percentage, you know? So it's 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 something that, you know, we need, we need to have, you know, reform and change and 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 to to produce the outcomes that we know we should be having here in the education Mecca of the world.
Mm-hmm. You know, it we in the the vein of economic um equity.
Yep.
Uh, particularly for uh communities who have been racially and um systematically pushed out of the system and out of the process and started way behind the finish line. Let's be real clear. So in the context of reparations, right?
Yep, yep.
We know that Kevin Peterson is one person.
Yeah, yeah, just got off the phone with him.
Okay, good. Brother, you know, champion for um the name change in Faneuil Hall. It's been a big challenge even to be able to get a hearing under the Walsh administration. But now by the grace of God, he was able to get a hearing under the Wu administration. And now, and I believe even a commission is be is either set up or about to be set up to address reparations or as Detective Bellington says, payment in lieu of services rendered.
That's absolutely right. And uh I think that hearing is happening next week. So if anyone wants to testify to that, uh, please, 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 we want to hear your voice. And it's exciting times in the city of Boston, you know, and that's what happens when you have a very diverse Boston City Councilor. You know, you you start having commissions on reparations and to 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 your point is we have to be targeted, right? We we have to give the resources to those who have been historically, you know, pushed off to the side, right? Uh, and we have to um 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 acknowledge that, right? Um, and 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 to to Kevin's point, um, what what this commission looks like, you know, we want to hear from as many people. Is it an apology? Is it is it a research on 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 all the issues that that come stem from Boston, right? Uh, and then and then after we find out what 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 um what Boston needs to apologize for, we have them apologize and then we give out the reparations and the assistance that's needed. And I believe Evanston, Illinois um has done something to this extent and has been given reparations um to 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 um to the residents and in in the, I think they're doing that in the form of of um housing. So um what what does it look like? You know, what does reparations look like? Is it is it is it housing? Is it is it college tuition or is it a bulk of money? So we want to hear from as many people, but we what what I know, it it definitely needs to happen in order to level the playing field here in the city of Boston.
You know, when we talk about equity and you talk, my understanding is that that disparate report that we talked about, the eight dollars medium income for African Americans vice two hundred and forty seven thousand for our European, it the 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 thing was not, it was real estate. That was the major variable in terms of the disparity.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Real estate.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why one of my focus is is homeownership and it's targeted homeownership. Anything I do, I want to make sure that we're targeted, right? Because it's through targeted assistance is that we're gonna see uh the black and brown community elevate. You know, that's why we're not seeing them uh gain economic uh mobility, right? When we're being targeted instead of saying this is for everyone, right? We have to be targeted with the assistance because a lot of those other laws, right, were targeted to us. You know, redlining was targeted, you know, those were targeted. So when we talk about equity, we have to be targeted with those resources, with those initiatives and with those assist assistance. So we're working on a few ideas and hopefully I'll I'll be able to come back and share with you some of the ideas that we're gonna be targeted with assistance when it comes to homeownership. Um, and then also using tools in place that already are targeted to our um to 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 our black and brown communities and seeing if we could change the way we use those tools and funding in order to uh 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 create economic mobility. Um, I mean, and 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 this is uh one idea that I could say like, like we 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 incentivize and encourage, you know, black and brown, we encourage people to 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 be renters, right? With Section Eight vouchers, you know, we 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 say here, you know, we'll give you subsidized rent. Why why can't we take that same type of thinking and say, here goes income assistance to buy a home?
Correct.
Right?
Right.
Like 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 let's start thinking along those lines and 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 helping and really helping um people, uh, black and brown communities build generational wealth and attaining homeownership that they could pass down to family members and also, you know, securing the stability in in their community. So tho- those are the way you're thinking that 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 we're gonna be looking to create ordinances and home move petitions and start making change here in the city of Boston.
It's outstanding. Um, I know that our brother Sagan Idu, who is um now the chief of economic.
Yes, very excited about that.
Huge, huge, huge. And I saw almost recently in one of the publications, I think it may have been the Banner um or the Reporter where he said, you know, being a person born in Mattapan, as he's going to the various business districts and being able to see the things that we can be able to do. He is unapologetically and being targeted to the communities Dorchester, Roxbury, Mattapan, and the in the black community that have been systematically pushed out to make certain, again, he's operating from a lens of equity. And I'm talking about marshalling city resources, including property, including land and parcels that, you know, we need to be able to use those parcels efficiently to be economic engines, not just economic engines, but holistic healing for communities that have suffered so much trauma and desperate treatment. So um so I'm happy to hear that because quite candidly before, it seems as a lot of the city properties, you know, and with with gentrification and the developers relation, we see this building boom. Every little piece of land that you see in Dorchester, Roxbury, Mattapan is being bought up for a hot high-end condos.
Right, right, right. And um we we wanna get more of a process around, you know, the disposition, the selling of those lands, right? We want to make sure to your point that we're using all the city tools, right? You know, whether it's contracts, whether it's the land, whether it's the city jobs, that we're using everything, you know, and being targeted, you know, with with what the tools we have as a city to make sure that we're we're bringing the assistance to black and brown communities. And I I'm very, very, very um hopeful for for the conversation, um, for the work that Shagun's gonna, Chief Idu's gonna do. Uh, gotta call him the chief, gotta put respect on that man's name right now. Chief Idu's name, you know, so very encouraged um with working with Chief Idu. And we've had um a few conversations already and um a- as I mentioned before, we're gonna be hosting a um or having a hearing on equity and city contracts this Friday. And Chief Idu will be presenting some um new initiatives that that that's ongoing in the city of Boston. Um, so just looking forward to to his leadership. And um he actually worked under uh Council Yancy, I believe, twenty something years ago, eighteen years ago.
That was my introduction to him.
Yep, yep. So so I know that he has this district uh in in his heart and in his mind uh when when he's when he's in that seat. So that's very encouraging. Um, and I'm looking forward to working with him.
Hey, man. And I, you know, I would submit the district, not just the district, but even as I said, City Council Yancy, though that was not my district, was the go-to person as one of the few black men who was really leading. I mean, to the point of even when City Councilor Chuck Turner was um treated wrongly. He said to the lawyer, you're wrong. And when and and stood alone and many instances has stood alone to be a champion, to show leadership for the whole city, even though he's a district city, was a district city councilor.
Yeah, no, Council Yancy, he's he, we know he's going down in history, you know, like Council Yancy has done amazing work, um, showed great leadership, uh, was the council president, you know?
Right.
Was was the city council president. Uh, so his 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 legacy is definitely gonna live on. And I'm just honored honored to 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 be able to to say I'm sitting in the same seat that Council Yancy um sat in as well. And but it's 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 those type of leadership qualities that I look forward to bringing and um just making sure that we we keep in the forefront, you know, our black and brown communities and 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 um just standing with them when 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 they, at at all times, right? At all times. And I want to be visible um and 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 accessible um and 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 here and here for here for everything um that our black and brown communities need.
You know, the same thing you talk about, um, putting respect on people's names. And we see many people who, again, the leadership and the diversity is unprecedented. And again, to Mayor Wu's credit, um, that we have the chief of community relations um being Chief Miller.
Okay, yep, 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 yep. Beyond Chief Malora, yeah, gotta. It 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 it's a it's a different looking city hall, you know, it's it's a lot of diversity. It's 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 a lot of young, young people inside the city hall too. And it's a lot of excitement. Uh, and um the administration has been, you know, very, very, very welcoming and um I I I'm just excited, man. And a lot of the, a lot of the ideas that this diverse body is putting out there is being well received. So I I I I guess I also wanna, you know, kind of touch on your other point that there's been so many years, right, of 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 trauma, you know, of the government, not the local government, even the federal government, the state government, not paying attention to what's been going on in black and brown communities. But I want to encourage everyone to, you know, we're in a different moment of time, right? We're a different moment of time. And I know it's hard to 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 to
Make a shift.
To make a shift, right? It's definitely hard to make a shift, but we need you, you know? We need you. We need you to buy in in order to give us that fire, that fuel, that that voice to say this is what needs to be done because without the people's voice, we don't get to these seats. And we don't push, you know, we don't push for the Black Men's Commission without the people's voice. Because, you know, we we need those people because it wasn't just Tito, it was a whole host of people. You stood up there with Tito.
Correct.
You know, uh, Avon Bell stood up there with Tito. Um, Pastor Dickerson was up there, Matt Parker, James Mackey. And I don't want to keep on naming because I know I'm gonna miss someone. So, yeah, a lot of folk, but it's that it's those people that push for these agendas and for these things to happen in the city of Boston, um, and not even in the city of Boston, but in the history of the world.
It's absolutely right.
Right? So we I I just want people to understand that regardless of what happened in the past, we you we still hold the power. And it's that's how we're gonna get things done by that consistency. By the by 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 having a love for the people to keep on going out there no matter what is being said, right? Like if they say, if they veto that Black Men's Commission, it's like, all right, we're gonna keep on keeping on.
Correct.
Right? We 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 gonna get this passed.
Yes.
Because we know it needs to be passed.
Correct.
But that's why we need to make sure that we don't get too discouraged from government. So I want to encourage everyone to encourage someone to participate in 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 voting and being civically engaged because we need you. We need you to get things done.
Thank you. And to that point with regard to being civically engaged, um, so one of the communities that, um, again, has historically been pushed out of being civically engaged is our returning citizens. That unfortunately happen to be black and brown and poor.
Yep.
Once again, the new uh school to prison pipeline.
It's real.
We understand the disparate or uh the overpolicing of black and brown men and the over sentencing of black and brown. We even entities like Manlio that are black and brown and female rank and file and retired police officers who are experiencing racism and sexism within the police department. Have a whole association to be able to protect each other because when you speak out against this, the backlash of that is that you're going to be, you're going to be treated harshly within the black with the coat of the blue.
Yeah, yeah, no, and it's um a big part of that is making sure that we break through those barriers and have representations at all levels, right, throughout every department in the city of Boston. Um, so it's making sure and 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 also putting in mechanisms in place that when reputation is not there, that they're looking at promotion and hiring and discipline at equi- through equity lens, right? That they're not taking uh uh discipline or hiring someone um or they're not promoting more of, they're not, they're 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 doing it at with an equity lens and that we have to put put the mechanisms in place. And Councilman here, gotta shout her out again. She's she's leading on this uh with uh the um I'm gonna call it a D E I position in the city of Boston to make sure that those processes in place. And we had a hearing on this maybe like three, four weeks ago. Um, this is going to a working session to to continue to have conversations on how, you know, that is gonna be those tools or that person is gonna be throughout those city departments to make sure that reputation to promote. Because we we gotta remember, we live in a, the system is a human system. So it's humans that are making these decisions to promote or to dis- discipline somebody. So some type of what it takes is another human there to hold that other other human accountable, right? So so making her being aware of that uh and and putting that tool in place, it is is gonna start changing what our city departments look like. Uh, but you made another point um with with um, I'll come back to it because I can't remember what it was.
It'll come to, and and so in in that vein with equity and with civic engagement, particularly for our returning.
Right, our returning citizens. So yes, Council Louie Jan and myself uh uh will be holding a hearing on on returning citizens and and how, when they are returning, how do we establish their civic, how how do they establish their civil liberties and their rights? Uh, right now, um, when you when you when you're coming home and returning, returning, returning citizen, you don't get, I believe, a a a a ID, a social security card, nor do you have an address. So it's like, you can't do anything without either those, either those three things. And I'm not sure if you have your birth certificate.
Well, I mean, you you may, you may not.
May, right. So it's like this.
Those things should be intact upon release of incarceration.
Exactly. So we gotta be doing a lot more work with our returning citizens to make sure that we're putting them on the right foot, right? Because we don't want them to be in that revolving door, right? We gotta be setting them up for success.
Correct.
And and some of these programs um don't always speak to our returning citizens. So we have to make sure that we're creating programs that speak to their issues, right? That we shouldn't have to be doing a sogg and dance to get people that need the assistance into programs that are made for them, right?
Correct. So a few things I want to say, we we with little we got like, we have to have you come back again. We gotta have these conversations ongoing because we literally only have six minutes in. Um, but quickly with regard to the Office of Returning Citizens, so Bob Turner, who is the active director, we were very intimately with the Office of Returning Citizens, even as that stands now, we're piecemealing it. So Eric, myself, we will talk with um, but Brother Turner will actually call us and tell us he has a returning citizen who has a job, but a job interview, but they don't have an ID, right?
Right, right, it's real.
So what happens is we get a sponsor, someone from the faith community says, I'll pay the twenty-five dollars, write out a money order to the registry of motor vehicles. He'll pick them up from wherever they are because transportation may be an issue. They may need to gather their social security card, their birth certificate, need access to a computer. They need to be traveled back some shuttled around places because it could be any place across the Commonwealth or even out of the out of the um, out of Massachusetts. Everybody's not from Mass. And so gathering all those things, and we know that Brandy Fluka Oakley has legislation to be able to uh legislate being able to have a return uh an ID. But even the Office of Returning Citizens, that's a municipal department, should be able to be coordinated with the registry of motor vehicles. I mean, that's a no-brainer. It seems that's a matter of coordination of resources that is not in place.
Right, right. And we're we're looking into it and um we 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 met with the Office of Returning Citizens and we heard this from from um Bob Turner. Yeah, we heard this from Bob Turner. Um, and there's so much that we could do that's low-hanging fruit, you know, and it's it's and it's does the most, you know, it like what can you do without a license or ID?
Not much. You're setting folks up for failure.
Yeah, you're setting some folks up for failure, right? What and and then um we 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 um, we're gonna hold a hearing on that and just kind of dive into, you know, making sure that that collaboration is happening. Um, so, yeah, we met with Bob and we're we're looking forward to trying to establish in streamlining those 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 efforts.
Well, we we want to make a public advocacy advocacy for Bob Turner. We know.
Oh, yeah, he needs a staff.
He needs, and he needs to be in that position as the director. The Office of Returning Citizens was created um in DC, right? And the model is that it's supposed to be run by a returned citizen and optimal one who is in long-term recovery because those things have an intersectionality.
Absolutely.
And he has both of those criteria.
Yeah, no, he's an amazing guy.
You have to have compassion, passion, and an awareness of this community.
Absolutely, no.
Advocacy.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I hear it loud and clear. When I sat with him, uh, very impressive, very impressive man. And um he he has a great handle, great handle on on that office right now. And we're trying to be as supportive as possible, but I definitely hear you loud and clear. Definitely hear you loud and clear.
We'll need to bring him in. We'll bring somebody else in who's not been there, who doesn't know, he's done that. And so our hope is that again, that the model can continue to be what the model was. And quite candidly, he was the assistant and so now he's acting because Kevin has moved on. But he really should be our advocacy as well as those who are on the community advisory board are saying he needs to be the next director.
Right. And on top of that, we need to make sure that we get him some support. Right, 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 right. Some real money, some real money in that in that in that budget. But no, Bob Bob Turner is definitely a very impressive guy, doing some great work here in the city of Boston. And we 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 should be making sure that he has the assistance, support, and budget to get these things done.
Um, really two, a few seconds, but we do have a caller.
Okay.
You are, give me a second to bring the um music down here. So call, you're alive. You are, give me a second to bring the, um, music down here. So caller, you're live on the air, go right ahead.
Yeah, good, uh, good evening, Councilor.
Is this, is this Councilor Yancy?
Uh, no, 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 this is Eric.
Okay, how you doing, sir?
I have a question for you. So, um, when Mayor Walsh was here, we established, uh, made a declaration that, um, I believe it's in April, would be, uh, return, Returning Citizens Week. Um, and I remember talking to a couple of other councils and they didn't even know about it.
Yeah, no, um, definitely wanna look into this.
And so with them not knowing about it, how, how successful, how active can a, a Returning Citizens Week be if the city councils that are supposedly, you know, a part of this be effective? How can it be effective since they don't even know that there was a, uh, Returning Citizens Week or something like that?
Yeah, no, and, and you, you, you're absolutely right, Eric, and it's, it's on us to, to make sure that we are promoting and highlighting these weeks, um, and I, I'm gonna take a look at it to see what we can do um, as, as an office and see if we can get other counselors to be, be involved, um, in highlighting this week. But, but it's, it's through people like you, right, who's, who's, who's letting us know and advocating for this week to be amplified and supported is, is, is what holds us accountable to do the work. So I, I wanna say, I, I wanna say thank you. I, I wanna say thank you, and, and this is what I mean by, you know, having people more civically engaged and involved cuz we too need to be held accountable, um, to make sure that we're doing the work that needs to be done.
Because I, I think, I believe that it's a very important week for not only Returning Citizens, but for our community because not only did the Returning Citizens ask, we have to made it back to the community, the community has to be reacclimated about receiving these Returning Citizens.
Yeah, absolutely.
This week is very important for both sides to really come together and work together.
Right, no, you're absolutely right, and, um, yeah, let, let's, um, let's, I mean, if you wanna, if you have any ideas, please feel free to reach out to me. Um, I, I, we can, I mean, I, I'll give you, if you got a pen and paper, I, I, I gave into it once before, so got a pen and paper, you always feel free to give me a call, Eric, and we could talk about some ideas.
I'll grab your card when we get off the air.
Okay, it's Eric and, okay, all right.
Thank you, brother. So, um, with two minutes before, not even one second really before we go, I do wanna point real quickly the civic engagement. So we're working with State Representative Nika Elugado, who's now running for Senator. She helped to draft legislation in concert with Hula Mahia, as well as Sheriff Steve Tompkins for, uh, what we're calling a ballot box initiative at the Suffolk County, both Nashville County Jail and the Suffolk County House Correction, to build infrastructure that is much more proactive for our returning citizens to be able to be engaged. So we're hopeful to get your support with regards. To pass the Senate, but this is aggressive, um, that our returning citizens need to be engaged. We're also working with the African American Coalition to be able to draft legislation. Again, it's important to have them on the front end. This is the year that we're electing our sheriff. Other positions.
District attorney. A lot of state positions.
Definitely, our returning citizens have been integral in getting people like Hula Mahia and State Representative Nika Elugado and Liz Miranda, District Attorney Rachel Rollins, on and on. Many Congresswoman Prezi have been put in positions because of advocacy from our brothers and sisters who are advocating from behind the wall.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and as I said, you know, we can't do it without you guys, you know, we can't do it, but it's important to make sure that we're empowering every community member in our community and making sure that they have access to all the, all their rights, right? To all their rights here in the city of Boston. Um, so yeah, definitely, please, please include me as a, as a supporter on that and anything I can do um, to amplify and be supportive, let me know.
Thank you, Councilor Worrall.
Yes, thank you and God bless, and I appreciate this and looking forward to the next time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, listening audience. We gotta go back on the other side of the top of the hour.